And I'd like to welcome everybody to the Lowell Planning Commission. Today is January 11th, 2016, and if we could, please stand for the Fledgling Allegiance.
Fledgling Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Cadwalader?
Here.
Commissioner Carney will be absent tonight. Commissioner Gerard?
Here.
Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Salasvudel?
Here.
Commissioner Tealander?
Here.
And Commissioners Zanstra? And at this time, I will be taking nominations for the position of Chair.
I would like to nominate James Zanstra for Chair.
Do I have any further nominations? Okay, then at this time, I'll declare the nominations for Chair closed. And at this time, I was for a motion in a second to elect James Zanstra as Chair.
I would move to elect James Zanstra as Chair.
Okay, and at this time, I will turn the meeting over to James Zanstra as Chair. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of electing James Zanstra as Chair, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I will turn the meeting over.
Do I stay here?
Oh, you go over it in the middle.
Things are gonna change around here. Alright, I guess we have to go into nominating the Vice Chair. I guess we're open to nominations for Vice Chair.
I would nominate Dave Cadwalader.
I'll second that.
Alright, can we move to vote on that?
Is there anybody else?
Sorry, anybody else, I'm sorry. I'm new here.
We'll help you along.
The quick way is to move to closed nominations and cast unanimous ballots.
Can we move to closed nominations and cast unanimous ballots?
Yes.
So maybe you can make that motion.
Oh, okay. I'll make that motion.
I second that.
Alright, move to unanimous vote. Alright, now we move to review and the adoption of the Planning Commission rules and procedures.
Mark, would we need to excuse the absence first or is that down the road?
You can do that now. That's pretty much whatever any time. Usually we're on a roll call.
Okay, can we move to?
Move to excuse the absence.
Excuse the absence, yeah.
I'll second.
All of us for yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, it passes. Alright, now let's move to review and adopt the Planning Commission rules and procedure. I guess we're open to discussion.
I didn't notice any changes from last year, is that correct?
Correct, there are no changes. We can go through a few years ago and update these. It's important for all the city boards and commissions, they have rules of procedure. Many of them don't, but it's quite essential for the Planning Commission to have them because you are an administrative body and there's certain decisions that you make and you really wanna have a good set of rules and procedure that essentially just walk you through how you conduct your business, which rules for your business. So, you know, the way to proceed is that if there are any changes, anything you want to make, we could discuss those. You can have that discussion and if not, then you wanna move over to that and you resimply as they stated.
Motion to adopt this is?
I'll second.
All in favor of adopting?
Well, I'd like to have a conversation, a conversation first. I mean, I know we have 48 hours and I was at the last city council meeting, so I just wanna make sure if we're following procedures that, I believe they were 48 hours too, I don't know, is that what you said?
Yes.
And did it was seven days, because there's a proportion about notification, seven days within they required a meeting. Consider, and I can't remember what you guys stated, so I just sort of make sure we're kind of all on the same page. I don't remember what that is, but other than that, that looks good. It kind of conforms to the city councils looking at doing.
What was that comment? I didn't follow.
Okay, at the last city council meeting, there were some conversations about 24 hours is enough or 48, I believe they said on 48 hours on prior notice. And then there was something about something written, seven days, and I believe that's what we have in ours. So I think we're close to what they had, so is that pretty much what it was, if I remember correctly?
Yeah, it was discussed at the council meeting.
Yeah, so then I'm good, because we match what here, what they talked about, so it's kind of all together.
Alright, any further discussion? If no further discussion, all in favor of passing this?
Yes.
All opposed? Alright, the motion to keep it carries. Let's look at approving the last week's agenda for last month, I guess was December.
The agenda for tonight.
Alright, I'm sorry.
I would move to approve the agenda for tonight.
I'll second.
Okay, open for discussion. All in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, carries. Now we move to approve amendments of the previous meeting. So, any discussion for that?
I would move that we approved the amendments from last month's meeting.
I'll second.
Alright, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Alright, passes. Alright, now we're open to public comments and communications concerning items that are not on the agenda. Are there any? Alright, so no further discussion, all those in favor of moving on, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Alright, carries. Let's go to old business, which is zoning changes for Grand Rapids gravel. Guess we're open for discussion now.
This would be, Andy's been working on this, there's a note on your packet, and Andy will take up the details and answer your questions.
Yes, at the last meeting, we sort of introduced this topic to you guys, and this very follows in response to a potential for mining operation on Boz Road in the southwestern part of the city. And so, again, just to sort of recap, in determining whether or not that's something that could be approved there, we sort of came across several issues in zoning ordinance that need to be corrected, and so that's what this ordinance proposes to do, sort of kind of walk through the steps that I'm proposing here to change the ordinance and map, so it's clear as to what we're doing here. First step is to correctly illustrate that the city's floodplain is an overlay on the zoning map and not its own separate zoning district. And so, the current zoning map shows the floodplain as its own zoning district that is sort of dark blue shade, and that does not match up with what the text of the ordinance says, the text says that it's an overlay, and honestly, it overly makes more sense to me. So, I propose, and I think I sent you guys last month, the map that had the floodplain shown is an overlay, so that was one pretty significant step. And also, the boundary is drawn correctly, so it matches what the actual floodplain is, the 100-year floodplain is in reality. The second step then is to rezone the property that is currently his own floodplain to something else. And so, again, you'll see in the map that I gave you last month, there are a number of properties that are highlighted and they're zoned, they're kind of outlined in like a thick dark blue color. So you'll see, I sort of propose that we rezone those to various districts depending on kind of what makes sense. So the Grand Rapids gravel property, for example, I propose to zone that to industrial, since the northern part of that is owned industrial anyways. Then there are several other properties, generally right along the river, for example, right at, who is Boz Road and M-50, there's a property there on the southwest corner that's, I'm proposing that we zone that R-3, and again, that's simply because half that parcel was zoned R-3 and half that was zoned floodplain before. So I'm proposing that entire thing simply be zoned R-3. And then you'll see the rest of the property, basically follow the same logic. When there's a simple continuation of an existing district, I've just done that. If there's a property that's half zoned, one thing and half zoned floodplain, I just extended the existing district down to replace the floodplain. And then in any other cases, and there aren't many, again, I've just tried as best I could to just logically extend the most adjacent zoning district, so that it applies to that property. Or in a couple cases, I propose that we rezone them to public facilities, because that is, because they're owned by the city, and so again, typically that's what we do with city-owned And then the last step that I've suggested is just to kind of clean up the map, and this is something that we'll be working on over the next few weeks, is just to further update the map and clarify, so that all of the various rezonings that we've done over the last couple of years now will be shown on the map. For example, we have the mixed-use district that we adopted a year and a half ago or so, and along with that, we also wrote in something called key frontages into that ordinance, if you guys recall correctly. So those would be shown on there as long as just a lot of the miscellaneous rezonies that we've done. At the end of the day, we'll still be able to have a map of your ordinance and a map on the line this year that will actually be 100% accurate, showing everything that's been done over the years, and that is completely accurate. And so that's something that's in process, I think it's pretty darn close now, but I do wanna make sure that we have everything correct before we move on to that stuff. And the last thing that we'll need to do is also amend the text of the zoning ordinance, and the text is amended to make sand and ground aligning something that would be possible. And again, one of the challenges of the previous ordinance was that it allowed basically any, almost any land use would have been a special land use, whether or not it was permitted. So if you recall when we did the mixed-use district, one of the reasons why we did this was to make it a little bit easier for someone to do a very desirable type of development that fit in with what we all wanted and what the master plan wanted. And then having the floodplain district written the way it was sort of undid all that by making anything go through a special land use process, so anything downtown, anything within almost all of the mixed-use district is always in the floodplain, because the floodplain is pretty big, encompasses a lot of the city. And so by adjusting the text to allow for basically the same types of land uses that you would have in the underlying zoning, just with some additional provisions to deal with some of the special challenges that come along with floodplanes, that allows us to kind of move forward in a logical manner, allowing land uses that we want to allow, but also still take the necessary precautions that we would need to take when we're dealing with something with potentially flood. You know, technically, there's a 1% chance every year of 100-year floods, so any of these properties could get inundated every year, hopefully not, but it's possible every year, or it could be two years from now, or three years from now, or five years from now, or it could not happen for 200 years, we have no idea. But every year, there is a small chance of that happening. And so we wanna make sure that we are prepared to deal with those challenges and to make sure we have something that makes sense and so that somebody does develop, within the floodplain, that they have that sort of, you know, extra set of regulations, a little bit higher bar that they have to meet moving forward. And then the other thing that this amendment does is it simply permits via a special land use permit, the, what we call the removal and processing of top soils, stone, rock, gravel, lime, or other soil or mineral resources in the industrial district. So this would also permit mining on that specific property that's owned by Grand Rapids Currently, it's sort of questionable whether or not that would be allowed on that property, because there's a very popular conflict that needs to be resolved, but I think this change is the best course of action for that property for a variety of reasons. And so, again, this is just a civil change that would allow mining on that property, but also any other property that it's zoned for industrial right now. So there's only a handful of those, most of them are already occupied, most of them are pretty darn small, this is, I think, the biggest one by fairly large margin. So one thing that you will need to think about moving forward is that whether or not that is something that we would want to allow on any industrial property in the city, and so that'll be needing some thought. So, that's kind of a lot of information, hoping it's sinking in a little bit more now we've gone over it a couple times. So at this point, I guess, this is all a bunch of zoning changes, so before we do anything, we will need to hold a public hearing on it, whether you want to do that in February or not, if you're comfortable with it enough to schedule a hearing, or if there's something that I can do to maybe help you guys understand it a bit better, help you, you know, make head or tails out of this. I know there's a lot of little changes and there's some nuance involved here, and so I wanna make sure that you guys are comfortable with it before you schedule a hearing and get prepared to pass it on to council. So, I guess with that, Chairman Zanstra, I'll turn it back over to you, if you have, or anyone else for that matter, has questions or concerns or anything like that, just let me know. And again, if there's anything that I can do to make it easier for you guys to understand, I will do what I can.
Hen, go ahead. Isn't there a couple houses right through there?
There are.
Are you talking about the Grand Rapids gravel property?
Yeah. Yeah, I think so, and those are the ones, if you see on the map that I gave you, how there are a couple of notches cut out of that property, that's where those houses are.
They have a pile of dirt right next to their house?
Potentially, I mean, it all depends on how, I mean, we haven't, we don't have any concrete plans as far as how they're gonna do it, but yeah, I mean, potentially, they could be affected, but we don't know yet for sure, and I don't wanna get into that part of it yet. But yeah, there are a couple of houses there, and there may be, I think there are some across the street as well, perhaps, I can't recall off the top of my head. I don't know, to the west, I think all township owns a property right to the west, it's a park of some sort.
Yeah, we own that park, some there.
Yeah. So yeah, I mean, as we work through that process, if and when it gets here, as far as the special land use application is concerned, we can evaluate all the criteria and think about, you know, firms and buffers and all that stuff that goes along with it.
And will point to the city attorney getting involved, is that before we go to a public hearing to look to make sure we're doing it right?
I think so, I mean, he's got a copy of this now, I've not heard any comments from him yet, but I expect, yeah, he would be involved, and I would want his review and his blessing to make sure, for the same thing, I mean, he won't think of something that I'm not. But yeah, he would definitely have some input here.
My only concern is that, because like the memo says regarding Grand Rapids gravel, and then we're talking about a complete change, I just wanna make sure that we're not setting some kind of precedent because it's about one specific thing. I mean, if we're gonna change the zoning, we should change the zoning, but not because of one.
Right.
And that might just be like wording, but...
Yeah. The issue with the floodplain, to me, is a problem regardless of whether or not, I mean, I noticed that a while ago, and when this came forward, this was, just felt like a good opportunity to fix it. The issue with the conflict between the map and the text, to me, is a pretty significant problem, because the map isn't, because the map is basically incorrect. We can't have properties that are just zoned floodplain, because the text says the complete opposite, basically. So rectifying those, to me, is a very important thing. The one change that I guess you could say that we may be harming more or less because of the Grand Rapids gravel application, we are allowing mining in the industrial district. But again, the reason why I wouldn't want to back off of that either is because I don't know, depending on who you talk to, I don't know that you can restrict mining to any one zoning district at all. And in some places, like Riley, for example, we've taken the approach that it's allowed in any district, so long as you have sufficient space for it. And that goes back to the presentation that I did a while back, reminding it's a sort of preferred, you know, special use of property that gives some kind of special protection because it is so unique. We can't zone for gravel lining like we can zone for commercial businesses, because you can't, you can't mine gravel where there is no gravel on the ground. You have to get it where it's at, you can't get it somewhere else. So that, that line of thinking is what has sort of enabled it to have this sort of preferential status. And so in this case, I don't think, in that, I don't know that mining is an unreasonable use of that property anyways, and so I, I think it's in our best interest to be responsive to that and to, you know, not get into a fight over mining, where we're not necessarily in the best position, you know, to defend some kind of decision like that. So that's why the mining stuff is being proposed, but the other changes are things that really need to happen anyways, I think.
So, I mean, basically, it's, we give you our blessing, you go to the attorney, and then we go to public forum, and then city council.
Correct, so like I said, this city attorney has this, how much he wants to or may change it, I don't know, he might not change it at all, he might change it significantly, I don't know, I guess we'll see. But once we get something back from him, we can either, we can just plan out on a hearing for the next month, if you're comfortable with it, if you'd rather wait to see what he says first, we can wait, and then you'll have a hearing maybe in March. But at any rate, when it's in a, we'll put it in a format that you're comfortable with, then yeah, we will hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission, and then the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to City Council.
Alright, does anyone have any more comments? Alright, so I guess from here we go and take it to the attorney, anybody wanna do that?
I don't think you do. Yeah, he already has it. So I just haven't heard back yet, I'm expecting you here in a few days, but I don't know what's going on. So, as soon as I hear back from him, you'll either get a revised ordinance from me with his changes incorporated into that, or you get the same thing as it is now, and then we can go from there.
I think the question for tonight would be, do you, we can get the city attorney to prepare the ordinance amendment, do you want to go ahead and have a set of public hearing for your next meeting, or do you wanna see, let's see, attorney has to say first and then set a public hearing? I don't know that there's a time schedule on this where we feel like we have to move forward quickly.
Not really, I mean, they wanted to have something, I know the Grand Rapids gravel folks were interested in spring, that's sort of a nebulous, you know, thing.
I like to keep it moving forward.
Yeah.
Keep it moving, but like, it changes drastically, would you postpone it another month or what?
Well, I mean, usually when the hearing is posted in a paper, like, and then hold it, but at the same time, if there, if we hold a hearing and then, then after the hearing, the ordinance changes significantly, that would probably mean that we would need to schedule a second one, because I don't like to schedule a hearing and make a huge change and then just continue on.
I'd like to wait and see if the attorney has like a materially significant, yeah, and then, rather than having to schedule.
So, I mean, it might be that if we hear back from him in the next day or two, and you see this looks fine to me, then maybe we can just go ahead and schedule it in February anyways.
And we can set those hearings as most readily, it doesn't require action by the Planning Commission. And we had case, for example, with the cell tower, when we worked on the cell tower stuff, we had a public hearing, it was heading to the council, between it heading from here to the council, we sort of sensed that maybe there were some questions that were unanswered at the Planning Commission level, and so we said to the council, can we just pull this back and take it back to the Planning Commission? We did do that, so it's okay to have a public hearing and then maybe take another month and have a second public hearing if you're comfortable.
Yeah, I would at least like to see us be able to get in front of the council sometime in April or early, you know, just in case something does come up, you know, at March and then, and then it's in the spring and they'll be ready to mine.
Should be a pretty easy time here, but yeah.
I'm wondering, are they wait, I mean, will it get immediately started, or what does spring mean?
Well, I mean, that's when they said they would come in to apply, I mean, because even once this is done, that doesn't mean they can start, that means they can just come with plans and apply for their project. The review process itself might take another four months, from all I know. I mean, it just depends on what they turn in, what kind of public turnout we get, what kind of comments we get, if they have to make any changes and things like that. I've seen these mining things right on for, you know, four or five months, I've seen them get approved in one meeting. So, that just depends on what they turn in and how everybody sort of reacts to it.
Yeah, I'd like to keep it moving.
Does this go any farther than the city of Lowell, is the state involved in any of this mining? Are they pulling permits from them?
Depends on what they do, if they say dig a pond more than five acres or something, then they would have to get a DQ permit. So that depends on what they propose. If they're mining and there's no pond creation or anything like that, I don't know that they necessarily have to go to the DQ, but if there's any sort of wetland disturbance, if they're in the floodplain, that would certainly impact the, then the state and even with the...
FEMA?
Yeah, FEMA, somebody might also get involved, or the core engineers, because then you also don't wanna get into displacing floodway and things like that. So, that'll all be evaluated when the actual application comes in.
And typically in our site plan reviews, we recommend, we'll have a number of recommendations for the Planning Commission, and one of those, I think the most always is that the applicant comply with any other state local requirements required. So we'll have that as part of site plan review as well.
Thank you.
Colonel, any other comments? We don't need to vote on anything here?
I don't think so, it sounds like a consensus, we'll keep it moving forward.
Alright, is there a motion to open for a public hearing for new business?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Alright, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed. Motion carries. Anyone wish to speak on the proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance related to breweries? Go right ahead. Alright, alright.
And this may be a good time for E&amp;D, you know, why don't you jump in, maybe for E&amp;D to give a little bit of background as well?
So, again, obviously in West Michigan, Michigan in general, craft brewing is sort of taking over, and that's okay by me. So, but the city was approached with a request or an interest in developing a sort of contract brewing or brewery facility in the C-3 district, and we looked through the ordinance, we really couldn't find anything in any district that's, would be something comparable. And so, since anything that's not expressly permitted in the ordinance is thereby prohibited, then your logical conclusion is that breweries are prohibited in the city, and for one, that's not what we want, and for two, that's also exclusionary, and we don't want that either. The next appropriate step was to amend the zoning ordinance to permit brewing in some capacity, in some zoning districts somewhere in the city. And so this ordinance that you have in front of you here does that. And so just to sort of walk through the ordinance, there are a few changes here from the last copy that you got last month, so I will highlight those for you. In section one of this ordinance, it simply creates a definition for what a brewery slash winery is, and the change here is that we also include ciders and distilled spirits under that same umbrella, so if somebody wanted to open a small craft distillery of some sort, they could do that as well, in addition to a small brewery or a small winery type facility. The chapter, or section two of the ordinance simply amends the definition of a restaurant, this is the definition that already exists, except that I've added, this last sentence is new, it says a restaurant may also include a... is new, it says a restaurant may also include a brewery slash winery as an accessory use. So again, that's for maybe an existing restaurant or something that's going to primarily be a restaurant, but they want to have a very small capacity brewing, brew pub type operation on site, this would allow them to do that sort of under the umbrella of a restaurant.
So, I got a question, the restaurant can have a brewery, but the brewery can't have a restaurant?
Right.
What's the, yeah, what's the reason?
The brewery slash winery, I'm thinking, is more of a strictly production-oriented facility where it's almost, in that sense, more of an industrial-ish sort of use, where there's basically, you're making the product on site, and then you're primarily delivering it somewhere else, so it's going into kegs or whatever, and then you're providing it to your client somewhere else.
So they can't have like a place where people can sit in there and drink something?
They could have a tasting of some sort, yes.
But no food?
And I think we have in here, it may include retail sale of beer, wine, spirits, and similar products, made on site and related items. So again, if they have some, you know, some plain glasses, some coasters, some, you know, bottle openers, or, you know, accessories, yeah, some of that stuff you see, and then they could do some small tasting.
Like a taffy and toast.
Yeah, kind of, where you just get a, you know, two ounces pour of a couple different kinds of beers, and you can try them, but it's not really intended to be something where somebody is going to be going there and having a whole bunch of food and everything else. If they wanted to do that, that's fine, I would just call it a restaurant.
You just have to open up a restaurant.
Yeah.
So what's, if you start out as a brewery, what's the, I mean, how would you become a restaurant? How would that work differently or something?
Yeah, I mean, they would, because a restaurant, I mean, the impact of a restaurant and the traffic that it generates is probably going to be much more significant than what a sort of production-based brewery facility would be. It would probably require a site plan at least, depending on where it was, obviously. If it was in C3, it would probably just be a simple site plan review process, and then that would be planning commission approval.
Do we have specific things that state what a restaurant is? And what do you mean, food? Does it mean by a toaster oven? Does it mean by specifics?
By chips or...
You know, so, you know, there's bars that might have an oven that can give you a two-minute pizza, but to me, that's really not classified as a restaurant. So I was just making sure...
According to this, I mean, it's the selling of food and drinks, so any food would seem to make a restaurant.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's going to be some...
They got bags of chips in the back.
That's my question, what's, you know...
I think that's the primarily...
For consumption on the premises.
Can I tell something else that might help with this discussion, or maybe make it work? But you're talking about brewery slash winery, adding a definition for that, and then later on, you're saying that those are allowed in the C3 and in the industrial district? Restaurants are already allowed in the C3 district, but not necessarily in the industrial district. So you might have an industrial area where somebody just wants to produce beer and wine and then sell it off premises, and we may not necessarily want a restaurant up there, or we may not want people selling food in an industrial district, but you certainly would want to have it in C3, and that's where you're going in C3. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, it's not as painful unless you're trying to go straight.
And also note that we're allowing the brewery slash winery in C3 and industrial, but we're not allowing it, for example, in C2 downtown or mixed-use, because again, I don't view that as a primarily retail operation, this is primarily a production-based, manufacturing, distribution-type of operation.
Does that make sense to you?
Well, if somebody were to have a restaurant in a C2 district, they could have also a brewery slash winery as an accessory used to the restaurant.
They can't have a bar with a, if I'm not serving food with a brewery?
If it's an industrial.
Right, so if you, if you're in C3 and you have, if you have a brewery slash winery, you can have tasting, but I would say that you can't have a full-warming kitchen where you're serving all kinds of food.
What can I serve? Full glasses of beer, have table seats?
Probably, I mean, I don't know about full glasses, but yeah, I mean, I think the intent...
I'm just here to taste.
Do you want the small or the smaller?
Yeah, I mean, I think the intent here is to allow someone to go into a brewery or a winery like this and taste a few things that they have. And Rockford, there's a perfect example of what I have in mind when I write this in town there, where there's, it's a small winery, you've got, I don't know, half a dozen or so wines, you go there, you can get a flight of, you know, small glasses of three or four ounces, there's no food, and you just taste them, and if you want to buy a bottle, you buy a bottle, if you don't, you don't, and then you leave. It's not a big complicated restaurant-type operation. There's not food that you can order, you don't go there for lunch, unless you're just going to drink your lunch. But it's primarily something where it's, where they're just, they're selling it on site or via delivery truck. In this case, it's wine, but other places, it could be beer, if primarily a sort of production and delivery-based business model, as opposed to a primarily retail-based business model.
I guess I'm just thinking like about the gravel bottom.
Yeah, they let you bring food in there.
Yeah, you can bring food, they don't serve any food, maybe pretzels, I've never been. But, I mean, it's a bar.
Right.
Yeah, but they make their, they make all their beer, I believe.
Falls into category brewery, right, winery, you know? They're not, okay, I've never, that's not an accessory use? It's not a restaurant accessory use?
No, they sell them.
And I guess all...
It's not a restaurant.
Right, and I guess all these questions are just so when this happens, it's very clear, there's no extra work for anybody else to do.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, if there are some concerns with the size of a property or how big the building is or something like that, or where it's located or accessed, and there are concerns about something turning into a very large-scale operation, then maybe it doesn't make any sense there. In that site plan review process, the planning commission can put conditions on the approval, it says, look, if you want to go bigger than this, that's fine, but you have to go somewhere else, because you just can't get it on here. And so as, if and when you approve something like that, you can put conditions on the approval, so that it sort of maintains the scale and the size of what was proposed and what's appropriate for that particular location.
Okay.
Great question. I have a question. Some breweries allow people to bring in a growler-type mug and refill, is this, are there any restrictions here?
Yeah, we think that would be fine.
I'm looking forward to this place.
Grown ones?
No, I don't, I don't even own a growler, but I know the kids, kids love them, and as long as the police chief is good with it, I'm good with it. And I talked to a local restaurant owner this past week, and he told me, anything that brings people into law, he's for it.
When that growler leaves, you guys, I guess, I get what you guys do, is that sealed somehow? Is it a cork? Is it some sort of...
They put an actual plastic seal on there.
So we won't have open carry issues?
That's right. Well, I guess we moved into the planning commission comments, but do we have any more comments from you guys? Can we get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll motion that.
I second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? All right, the motion carries. Is there a motion to recommend the adoption of the ordinance to the city?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries. Take a decision. All right, now we have the staff report.
Just the stuff that's in your pamphlet, and congratulations to each chair for the capacity. I don't want to steal the thunder of perhaps another announcement that's going to be made, but certainly I've been enjoying working with all of you.
I forgot earlier.
Over the years, so that's all I think I have for the staff report. I'll sue you if anything.
I have nothing further.
Do you need commissioner remarks?
I would like to announce that I have resigned from the planning commission, so tonight's my last night. So it's been great working with all of you. I'm, I'll be serving on a board for a nonprofit, so...
Which nonprofit?
It's called Open Table, over here in Lowell, so...
Great.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Well, thank you very much for what you've done.
You're welcome, thank you for being the chair.
All right, I have to never close the meeting before, so I guess it is...
Motion carries.
Motion opposed, yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
All opposed? All right, the motion carries.
All right. Good job, James.